Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the two thousand twenty-four F Y twenty-five Amherst School Board Public Hearing. Tonight is the second of a handful of meetings that we'll have to get ready for Voting Day on March twelfth. Tonight is the public hearing where we will review all five articles that will appear on the ballot, or could appear on the ballot, I should say, on March twelfth. Tonight, we will review these articles and then take a vote to move them on to the deliberative session, which will take place early next month on February fifth. Introductions first tonight. I'm Tom Gothier, the Chair of the Amherst School Board. To my left is Jason White, the Vice Chair, and Terry Beam to his left. Over on my right-hand side, all the way at the front of the table, Tim The Burge and Shannon Gaskoin, our other board members. And then the members of our administration here tonight, to my direct right Superintendent Mike Berry, Assistant Superintendent Steve Chamberlain, Business Administrator Amy Facey, and then our other Assistant Superintendent Christine Landworth. Steve, if you'd like to go to the next slide, we should have come up with a tap-and-go system where I can tap, and you would know when to to go to the next slide. So on tonight's schedule, like I said, we'll review the five articles, spread over the five different categories, if you will, that'll appear on the ballot, starting off with the Elementary School Construction Project Bond. That will be the last item that we discuss tonight as we saw that in greater detail last night in our Bond Hearing with Ms. Gaskoin and Ms. Beam. If you haven't had a chance to view that recording, I would highly suggest viewing that. We will have a much pared-down version of that tonight. We will do a full recap of it at the deliberative session, but in the interest of time, in the interest of being repetitive, you can certainly view that recording from last night at the Bond Hearing at South Hegan's Theater downstairs from where we are currently. We then have our budget, the proposed. If the proposed should fail, that's what the default would be on the ballot. The Capital Reserve Fund contribution out of unassigned fund balance. And then at the bottom, there are two new funds that we will review, Technology and Vehicle. These are two new Capital Reserve Expendable Trust Funds that we are looking to make initial contributions this year, and these will be used to fund long-term projects for technology, equipment replacement, network replacement, repairs, et cetera. And then the same on the vehicle side of things, looking to start a vehicle fund, which will allow us to purchase vehicles to assist with supplemental transportation in the district. Think things like a twelve-passenger van for extracurriculars, athletics, et cetera, clubs that need transportation, things like that. Just because bus transportation is a little bit more difficult at this time, as we've all discussed ad nauseam. Next slide, Steve. Main goal of the Board and the Administration as we look at getting into the budgetary impacts, this will be Article thirteen. We wanted to present the budget this year that will pass muster with voters. If we're being simple and straightforward with it, it'll be the first time in three years that we've had a budget proposed pass. If we're able to do that, currently operating under that default budget for the second straight year, because it failed on Voting Day in two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three. So using a zero-based budgeting approach, Mr. Berry and the Administration and the Board are presenting that budget that you'll see here tonight. In the creation of that budget, three central themes really drove the decisions on what got cut, what got funded, or what is proposed to be funded. Number one was a focus on reading, using that evidence and research-based practices that Steve has talked about quite a bit over the last year and a half. We know that literacy is the foundation upon which a lifetime of skills are built, and certainly want to make sure that the kids in Amherst, in a town that is very well-funded, if you will, are reading metrics and aren't necessarily where they need to be for any community, but particularly for a community like Amherst. So working to build that foundation for all kids, but particularly those younger elementary grades. We want to capture and expand instructional time as much as possible, ensuring that every minute that the kids are in the building counts. This effort began with the new contracts with teachers and support staff that passed with the voters last year. And then the Board and the Administration are continuing to look for ways to expand that instructional time and quality. It's not just the amount of time in the classroom, but the quality of the time that the kids are spending with the teachers as well. And then in regard to that last comment, the last item that really drove a lot of the budget was the supervision and evaluation of the teachers and staff, setting expectations, providing constructive feedback, ensuring that teachers can grow and develop in the craft, which is really a passion. And you know, they don't do this unless you love teaching, which certainly is going to benefit them in their careers, but obviously will benefit students as well. As we go through the presentation, you will see which items impacted the budget the most. There is one major driver that really impacted everything more than any other category, and that was the cost of health and dental insurance. For comparison, last year's rate increase was roughly five percent. That's an ish figure, as Steve likes to say. This year, the ish figure is twenty-one point eight percent for an increase for health, and then a four point seven percent for dental. Dental last year was a negligible increase. So we'll have more of that in a few slides, but that is a huge driver as, you know, personnel makes up the majority of the budget, and then health insurance is a huge factor on that personnel salary and benefits line. We do see the impact of the new collective bargaining agreements approved by voters last March for both the teachers and the support staff. We do have changes in staffing due to enrollment and student needs. That's both in regular education and in special education. Under Superintendent Berry, we continue to focus on the work that we started last year with Steve, where they focus on district-wide literacy, as I mentioned a few moments ago. We do have an additional bus built into the budget this year. This will help get kids to school on time, currently operating with fifteen, looking to go to sixteen. We know that getting kids with the breadth of area that this town covers, it's difficult sometimes to get kids to, with any traffic, any delays, any snow, any ice. Getting kids to school on time on a normal day is difficult, so adding an extra bus will help us pare down those roots a little bit and make sure that, again, we're getting every value out of every minute that we have in school. And then we'll also continue to work on our long-term and short-term facility needs, which we discussed last night, and we'll discuss further on in a couple of different points tonight. All right, Steve? Can you go right to the next one? So this is the Article thirteen that will appear on the ballot. I'm not going to read you through the whole thing. Just highlight the two points that matter. The proposed budget's thirty-four million fifty-five thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars. And if the proposed budget fails with that majority plus one vote on Election Day, March twelfth, the default budget that will operate under next year will be thirty-three million one hundred sixteen thousand five hundred and nine. So if we dig into the budget categories and start to break down what we're actually proposing, currently on that default budget for the second straight year, for F Y twenty-four, that is approximately thirty-two point eight million. So that is really the starting point of next year's proposed budget. Tim will explain more on that as we get to the default budget presentation in a little while. To give some context to that three point eight percent, I do think it's worth noting, and this is a, I guess, a tribute to Superintendent Berry, but also Steve and Christine and Amy as they worked together to craft their budgets and all the folks in the Superintendent's Office. But last year's proposed budget was a three point nine percent increase, but that did not include any wage increases for teachers. Those were not built into that budget last year. It only included all the other items that were in that budget. So the two CBAs on last year's ballot are where you saw the raises for the teachers and the support staff. So this year, those numbers are actually rolled into the contract as part of the default budget, because they were voted on by voters, they were approved, they are now part of our default budget going forward. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I didn't realize I left my phone on. So if you look at this year's increase, factoring in the fact that those CBAs are part of the default budget now, this year's increase is only a three point eight percent total increase, and it includes the first two years of each of those CBAs, the numbers that were passed last year, and then year two of those contracts, which will come up next year as well. It does also include an extra Student Day, which will impact just overall budget items when kids and staff, everybody's in the schools for an extra day. There are obviously increases in costs there as well. So just some context to where things were really cut and where we really tried to be focused on making sure this budget was zero-based and is as minimal increase as possible to make sure that we're able to get something passed while still meeting the educational goals that we have. The allocations of the fund and the budget break down into three categories. The top one is the one that will impact the tax rate. That is the General Fund. That's up about three point three percent this year, year over year. Our Food Services and Grants Budgets, those are both increases by about a half a percent combined, but the way that those work are those are offset by revenue. So grants, we have, we have to put the grants in the budget, but we have grants coming in to cover that three hundred and thirty-two thousand. So it's a nineteen thousand dollar increase. Grants are a good thing. And then Food Services, it's about a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars increase, but that is going to be offset by revenue. Think of Food Services as its own separate business running within the school district as well. It is worth noting that even though that's a big increase for the food service from this year to next year, what we're proposing, there is a hundred and ninety-two thousand surplus that we had in Food Services at the end of last year. And this year, we're actually, rough estimate so far, still very early, expecting about another thirty-five thousand dollars in surplus to be added to that fund as well. So that money can be used to support renovations or fixes into the kitchen equipment, upgrading stoves, doing things like that, but it can also be used to offset tax rate as well. But obviously, saving some of that for a rainy day for the kitchen staff as well certainly goes a long way. So we'll see more on numbers on that thirty-five, thirty-two thousand, thirty-five thousand, excuse me, thirty-five thousand when we meet next week in our regular board meeting. Next one, Steve? Diving deeper into the budget categories, you can see where the changes come from. Clark Wilkins is the top-line item on there, the largest increase. And that's, again, primarily due to the inclusion of the wages and benefits, and then the huge health insurance increases that we had, I mentioned earlier. We also have two Special Education Fellows from St. Anselm that were not included in the default budget. We're going to be adding those back in as we continue to reach our literacy goals with the addition of a new School Day next year in that CBA, as I mentioned, plus some other changes. There are additional days for office staff, so naturally that is going to drive up costs a little bit as well. But it is in exchange for an extra Student Day as well, so one hundred and seventy-five to one hundred and seventy-six in year two of that collective bargaining agreement. Facilities is going to include the typical preventive maintenance increases, repair, security, and then service contracts. Special Services Programming, that continues to adjust as needed to meet student needs. There is a large increase in the Special Education Transportation, but that is being offset by overall a reduction in the out-of-district Special Education tuition. So in some aspects, a wash there. We, in our last meeting in December, we talked with the Administration about a Special Education Administrator position they were looking to install at AMS. We ended up deciding not to go forward with that after discussion with the Board and with the Administration. So instead of a full-time admin-level position, they will have a part-time LEA Administrator. And the LEA Administrator will supervise the Individualized Education Plan, the I E Ps, that Special Education students have over at AMS. And that's going to really free up building leaders to be able to go in into classrooms, see teachers, work with teachers, do their evaluations, and really make sure that the teachers are using best practices and really advancing in their craft and coming up with plans to make themselves better at their craft. In addition to the Special Services, a side note, Heather Jennings, we saw the initial stages of an audit last month in our meeting, just looking at the overall program. She's going to continue to work on that as she comes into the full-time Special Education Director in the S A U, starting on July first. So she's working to audit this program to make sure that the budgets are aligning with the student outcomes in the coming years as well, which is obviously important for one of our larger line items in the budget. Technology is ongoing device replacements, network enhancements, equipment upgrades. That is a big increase this year. That number can fluctuate a little bit, which is why we're proposing the Technology Fund that you'll see later on tonight, just to make those items a little more stable. You can plan out a five-year plan. We know that we have the Capital Reserve Fund to replace fifth-grade computers this year, and then sixth-grade computers the next year, et cetera. So that's why we're starting that fund. Jason will have more on that in a little bit. But that's hopefully to stabilize that one hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar line that you see right there. Another bus being added to the daily transportation schedule, those are proposed transportation contracts, even though their contracts cannot be included in default budgets. So even if we don't have the proposed budget pass, we still have to make room for those sixteen buses in the default budget going forward for next year. But we are going from fifteen to sixteen again to make sure that kids get to school on time every day, which maximizes the educational time kids get, will spend in the classroom. And then again, you said, I mentioned earlier, Food Services on there, School Nutrition, that's going to be offset by revenue, so not a number that we're overly concerned about when you look at that proposed budget. Thank you, Steve? Looking at the staffing structure changes for next year, overall, this is a savings on the budget line. Is that the right? Yeah, I think I messed that one up. Go back one, Steve? No, you're in the right one. I may have just, I may have messed up my slides, so. So anyway, so there you can see, this is the breakdown. Yes, I did, I took notes on this. So this was the one slide that I wanted to, I asked Amy to put in there and clearly forgot about. So this is just going to highlight that the majority of our budget increases, where you're finding those increases coming from. So we talked earlier, I talked earlier about the health and benefits and the salaries that are getting in, getting into the budget there with two years of that teacher contract now going to the default budget. That's why that's a little bit bigger than the past. Overall, the three point eight percent increase, even though we have two more years of student, teacher contracts in there, you can see the health and benefits. We're proposing about a one point two million dollar change. That's the proposed budget increase, and you see about eight hundred thousand of that comes in that benefits for health and dental. That really is the driver. That makes up about two-thirds of the overall increase that we're proposing. So from the default to the proposed for this year, I thought that was a pretty telling, telling item to show this is where the budget increases are coming from and to show the work that Steve and, excuse me, Mike and the Administration have really done to try to pare that budget down. So again, health and dental benefits, we want to offer that to teachers. We don't want people to not have that. So it is a big driver in this budget, but I think this, again, just goes to show where, where those changes are coming from and to commend Mike and the team for really trying to focus on paring down and keeping increases elsewhere to a minimum. So I thought that was a pretty telling slide to be able to show, even if I butchered the telling of it. Now you go to the next one, Steve. This is the one that I was talking about with the staffing changes. Overall, you can see it's a net savings of about a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. That's primarily because of retirements and then new teachers coming in with different salary scales. We also have a reduction of one full-time regular education teacher at AMS. That was a position that was eliminated just based on purely student enrollment and student need. We also have one less lunch recess monitor at Clark Wilkins, and then based on student need as well, about two hundred thousand dollars in savings from paraprofessionals. That more than makes up for the increases that we see in the LEA Representative that I mentioned for AMS, a kindergarten paraprofessional as well. We have seven sections of kindergarten next year. We have six this year. So adding another classroom para for another kindergarten class next year. And then to continue to reach those literacy goals and those literacy initiatives, a full-time, excuse me, a point four F T E Library Assistant at Clark Wilkins. And you can see that those top three items are not in the default budget. Those are items that we really value, want to make sure that we get in there, but they are in the proposed budget. So if the proposed budget were to fail, those are positions that would go away, or we'd have to try to make sacrifices elsewhere to be able to still fund those and drive those priorities. We look at projected class sizes. This is what drives a lot of that staffing, not the special need side of things, but certainly the regular education. In the middle column there, you can see the current F Y twenty-four student population. Every class is in green or blue, which is what we like based on the recommendations for, just class size recommendations. We've talked about the STAR study in the past. Smaller class sizes, better teacher-student interaction, generally better outcomes. Next year, we're projecting out of the nine cohorts, if you will, from kindergarten all the way up through eighth grade. Seven of those nine will be within our range. Two of them will be slightly over, grade two and grade four. But adding another full-time teacher for those grades certainly would impact the budget in a big way. So those are slightly over. We think this is the best allocation for the teachers there. But you'll see this is where we are moving teachers for next year. I will note that the fifth grade, excuse me, two fifth-grade teachers. We have a smaller fourth-grade cohort this year, so we're removing two fifth-grade teachers. One of those fifth-grade teachers is that eliminated position, not necessarily that teacher, but that position's been eliminated. And then one of those fifth-grade teachers will go to sixth grade. You can see this year, we're operating in six sixth-grade classes. Next year, with a larger fifth-grade class size. This year, we will go to seven there to get into the details specifically on those. So with that, I will turn it over to Tim, and he will take us through the default budget piece.
Thanks. All right, so the default budget, I don't actually like to call it a budget. So a budget is a moral document. A default budget is just a calculation. It's all it is. It takes the last approved budget, which in this case goes all the way back to fiscal year twenty-two, since that was the last approved budget. For those of you that want further reading on it, it's New Hampshire RSA forty colon thirteen, Roman numeral nine B, if you'd like to get into the ins and outs of what is and isn't in a default budget. So if the default budget is not approved by the voters, the district operating budget will be based on that default calculation, which is described in the RSA. There are significant potential, significant reductions in programs, staffing, and/or facilities-related activities that will need to be made. From the voter, taxpayer, and school administrative perspective, the difference between the operating budget is what matters. That's what determines which programs the districts can offer. Decisions on specific reductions will be made by the Board based on a hierarchy of priorities provided by the Superintendent. So, thank you. Yep. So if you look at this year's default in the areas of impact, Students, Student Special Services, the largest increase, the default budget. That includes the Student Services Line, which is ninety-nine percent of which is salary and benefits. This, the driver here is a grant-funded position that's moving from the grant, from a grant into the budget. The increased contribution to the S A U budget is in the default, as is Food Services. And Food Services, as Tom already said, is offset by revenue, but we have to include that in the budget anyway. Leave it on this one for me. So the default budget as calculated according to the RSA, as you can see at the bottom, is thirty-three million one hundred sixteen thousand five hundred nine. This is arrived at by starting with the last approved budget, which again was fiscal year twenty-two, adding and removing various costs. You can see on this slide the various costs that are added and then subtracted based on that RSA to arrive at the default budget. In the simplest terms, you remove one-time expenditures, such as the Capital Reserve Fund contribution that we did. Then you factor in contractual obligations, such as the new contracts, plus the addition or subtractions of any debt services costs, right? The default does not include salary increases for teachers in terms of, no, wait, sorry, that's the last one. For any professional staff, all of that would come out of that, because those are not contractual, service contractor increases are not factored in. So whether that's transportation, other outside H V A C or other contractors that you need to bring in, you're not allowed to factor any of those costs into your default. All right, next slide. So the difference between the default budget and the proposed budget is roughly two point eight percent. You can see on this table where those are broken down into. You'll see right at the top, the facilities and AMS Administrative and Curriculum Costs are the top two differences between the default and the proposed budget there at the bottom.
Thank you, Tim. All right, so looking at the, you can go to the next slide, Steve, the revenue side of the ledger. We talked about food service. We talked about grants. This just gives you a breakdown of what the entire revenue piece looks like. Food service, we mentioned, has that big budget increase, but it will be offset by revenue. And then we're also sitting on that hundred ninety-two thousand in surplus last year and expecting another thirty-five thousand to add to it this year. And I say sitting on, I don't mean that we're actually sitting on it, just holding it into accounts. Some of those funds have been used to work on some kitchen repair and replacement projects. But in general, my point was that we had a hundred ninety-two thousand dollar budget surplus in Food Services last year and looking at another thirty-five thousand, hopefully to add on to it this year. We do see the additional grant money coming into the district, as well as additional federal, state, and local aid. And then we expect another seven hundred eighty thousand dollars in fund balance that we plan to use if the voters pass it to fund those Capital Reserve Funds, the big facilities contribution, but then also the technology and the vehicle fund. And then ideally, if all goes according to plan, we'll have about three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in unassigned fund balance that we will use to be able to offset the tax rate at the end of the year as well. So for the tax rate, what does it mean overall? For budget specifically, we talk about the General Fund. That is the one that affects the budget line item. You take, factor out the revenue, adequacy aid, property taxes, et cetera. We do expect an increase of about fifty-six cents per thousand dollars in valuation. So for the average house value of about four hundred eighty-two thousand, you're looking at an increase of about two hundred and seventy dollars to your yearly tax bill. That's approximately twenty-two fifty per month. And that is what the overall budget looks like. Again, that is Article thirteen. So with that, I will pause here and we will open it up for public comments. For any questions, comments on the budget, please make sure any questions or comments, you can direct them to the Board. We will do our best to answer them. You'll have three minutes if you want to come to the microphone in person. We'll give those folks the first opportunity. If you are listening online tonight, you'll have an opportunity in just a minute. Once we get through the folks that are here in person, we'll talk with them, and then we'll open it up for folks that are online. In preparation, if you're online, please make sure that your full name is in your avatar, as the directions indicate in the chat. We also want to make sure you turn your camera on, and then you say your name and your town of residence when we promote you to a panelist. But first off, we will open it up for folks that are here in person. If you'd like to ask a question, make a comment, please come to the table there, turn on the microphone, and we can get started. Any takers in person? Okay, so with that, I will open it up for the folks online. Any takers to discuss the budget, the proposed budget, Article thirteen, from the folks online? Yep, I can see that there on both screens, actually. My work's set up at home. Thank you. Okay, so seeing no questions here in person, seeing no questions online, I will take a motion from the Board to move this article to the deliberative session on February fifth.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Shannon. Can I get a second? I have a second from Jason. Any discussion, any questions on this? Okay, all in favor of moving this article to the Board for deliberative? Five in favor, none against? All right, next item on the agenda. We will get into our three Capital Reserve Funds. We'll start off with Article fourteen, and for that, I will turn it over to Jason White.
So I'm going to be talking, I think we're going to stop after each one, but I'm going to be talking about Articles fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. The important thing to note about these articles is that they are, have no, they're tax-neutral, right? And so basically, it's not, so for example, Article fourteen, we're looking for six hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. That's not new tax. That would be, right, money that was left over, and we want to use it for this particular fund, put it into this particular fund. And so I just want to emphasize that. This is not, we're not looking for on top of the budget another six hundred seventy-five thousand dollars through new taxation. This is money that would already, that we would already have. Additionally, what's important to note is the order of these articles matters. Okay, so what happens is, is whatever leftover monies that we might have, we fund them in this order. Article fourteen would get funded first, Article fifteen would get funded second, and then Article sixteen would be funded third. It really emphasizes our Board's priorities. This is kind of what we have been prioritizing. We have talked ad nauseam about facilities and facility needs and what we've been doing with facilities. Article fourteen, again, priority number one. So this year, we've already voted to take one point seven million dollars. Ask Steve, actually, if you can go to the next slide if you want. We've taken one point seven million dollars for the AMS Phase Two roof. That doesn't even get us the full roof. It gets a good chunk, but doesn't get, so I just want, I'm mentioning that to emphasize how costly these things are. So when we talk about, you know, Article twelve later on this evening, you can see that there's going to be money that's spent one way or the other if we're talking about one point seven million for the roof, and that doesn't get us a full roof. So just trying to connect all the dots for everybody and answer any questions that people might have. So Steve, if you go to the next slide, there's a couple more notes on that side. So this is still all, you know, Article fourteen. So over, well, in both, you can kind of see what our projections are and our plans are. So again, looking at the roof, if we look at F Y twenty-seven, which is the fourth little arrow down, that's more roof work that we don't necessarily have a price for. But I also want to highlight in F Y twenty-six, right, you're looking at a lot of Wilkins projects, right? You're looking at Wilkins Boilers, Wilkins Boilers, excuse me. You're looking at Wilkins HVAC Systems. Right, we don't necessarily have dollar amounts associated with these things, but I'm just highlighting that, yes, we have a plan for these things, but it's going to cost money no matter how you, how you cut it. So that's the importance of the C R F. We have plans for it. We're also looking to Roger Preston, our amazing Facilities Director, is really trying to come up with a new C N A for us so we have a better idea of what all of these things really look like long-term, because it's been a while. I think it's been two thousand seventeen was the last one. So we're trying to get updated, because obviously things change. But those are expensive items that you're looking at, especially associated with Wilkins and F Y twenty-six. I don't think there's a way around that. So Steve, next slide, please. I think that's it for Article fourteen.
Yeah.
Questions in, in voting or not voting?
Yep, so we will open it up for any public comment on Article fourteen. Again, we'll do the same. I don't want to have to repeat the whole thing each time. So if you're in person, we'll have your comments first, and then anybody online, you can raise your hand, and we'll get to you after folks in person go. Is there anybody in person that would like to ask any questions? We have a taker.
Hi, Caitlin Thompson, Amherst. I am not speaking on behalf of Ways and Means. I just have a general question. Jason, you mentioned about the AMS Roof Project. Understand that the Board just approved one point seven million for Phase Two out of, we're not sure how many phases. Or maybe you do have a number. Shannon says Ways, okay. So while you look that up, that's kind of irrelevant in terms of number of phases. But I know there was a presentation made to the Board about what the estimated cost would be. would be to do the full project to completion. I believe that estimate was around fourteen million dollars, give or take. So with this additional request to fund the capital reserve, this clearly doesn't cover the full cost of the fourteen million. So does the board have a sense of what its plan would be? I know you have a list of a lot of different projects that need to happen over the course of the next five years. So how do you envision prioritizing that roof project to completion? So it's not just, you know, two out of X done and, and then, how, how do you get it to completion, I think is my question?
Yeah, I'll start, yeah, so that's a great question. So, um, to answer the first part of your question, um, you accurately stated, we're looking at Phase Two with the one point seven. Um, it is a, if you count the phase we did last summer, so two, four, it's a six-phase plan. Um, but the presentation that we saw from EEI, there are a few different ways that we could break those phases up. So we could chunk them into, um, so that would leave four sections left after this section is completed. We could do two larger phases, so to have two more phases with each of those smaller sections built in. Um, and we could look at a potential bond or lease. And so with the lease, we would build that into the budget, um, and those are still ongoing discussions that we're having as a board. Um, but our priority and our hope is to complete this work, I think we've been talking over the next decade, to complete the roof at AMS.
And, and I think part of that, Caitlin, as well, goes back to what happens on voting day with any potential facility projects that are on there. And it also goes to a secondary, uh, uh, Roger Preston for deliberative, or for later this month, we're going to have a, a full capital needs assessment of what that long-term thirty-year plan is, maybe it's not thirty years, but a long-term plan. And I think when we get that fully laid out, that will help us prioritize, so the combination of that in voting day will help us prioritize. Does anything need to supersede the roof at Amherst? Can we go forward with that project and still make that A number one? Or do we need to make that number two because this other issue's popped up? So it's, it's still a moving piece, but I think that's the priority for right now. Elementary bond and then doing the roof at the same time with, uh, variety of different funding possi- mechanisms possible.
Yeah, that's a really good point. So if, um, if a elementary school project were to move to the ballot and pass, then the CNA projects, everything that we've planned out at Wilkins, that then goes away. And the capital reserve funding then would be, um, prioritized for AMS, because we wouldn't need it immediately for, um, excuse me, for Clark, yeah, for AMS, because we wouldn't need it for the Wilkins School.
Okay, yeah, I think, um, just having a sense of timeline of roughly ten years, that might be helpful just to give context to the wider public when you go through this process at deliberative.
And that's, and that is being worked on now, so, because we, we just needed an updated plan, we, which we did not have specifically for capital items at some of the other buildings, so.
Thank you.
And I think I'd like to add to that.
Go ahead, yeah.
So, uh, Caitlin, you know, when you talk about like, how do we prioritize? I think that the administration and the board is kind of works really collaboratively in prioritizing projects that are having the largest impact on student outcomes and student, um, for lack of a better term, interruptions, right? We're prioritizing the roof because it's interrupting what's going on with kids. Um, and so that's, and why we're prioritizing Wilkins, because right now that that's the most disruptive to being able to deliver the programming that the administration has shared, that they would like to, deliver for the students. So we're really trying to prioritize based on student-centered needs.
Anybody else in person, any comments or questions? Uh, looking online, I see nobody with their hand raised, so with that, I will take a motion from the board to move Article fourteen to the deliberative session.
Make that motion.
Thank you, Shannon. Jason with a second, hopefully that makes it easy for Danae, we do that all night if we're going to do that. Uh, any further questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? One, two, three, four, five, none opposed, so Article fourteen moves to the, to the deliberative session. Article fifteen, our X Technology Expendable Trust Fund, this will be the creation and then initial deposit into said fund, and I will let Jason go from there.
Sure, so Article fifteen, seventy-five thousand dollars, again, not new taxation, I'll probably continually say that, just so everyone knows, it's not, not new taxation. This would be our second priority. And so part of the reason for this fund is, well, there's a few reasons. One is to be honest, when the budget doesn't pass and we end up in a default budget, uh, Board Member B dies a little bit inside each time. She goes, one of the first things that we, sorry.
The Board Member B died and I was like, we're going dark on this one.
Uh, because one of the first things, yeah, her spirit dies a little bit, because one of the first things that we go, uh, for, to be honest, we use, we take money from the technology budget line item. So as Tom mentioned earlier, it's, it's a, it's a fluctuating cost, depending on, on what we need. So this would help us to have a backup in case we're in that situation again. So last time we were in default, so the first fiscal year, we, that was the first thing that we looked at, at, at taking off the plate. And, and, and Board Member B would like you to know that we have a longer technology plan. But this, yeah, this will help fund. But additionally, it's also, uh, a student safety issue, because we look, right, our students are connected to the wifi, connected to internet. And so this will, as you'll see, it says technology infrastructure, so it'll allow us to make sure that we have the proper safeguards in place to protect our students' uh, information, to protect our students from any potential cyber harm. So it's a student safety issue as well as a budget issue. But that is why we are proposing that this new fund be, um, or come into existence.
Okay. Open it up for public comments, folks in person or folks online? If you're online, I'd like to raise your hand, please do so, if you're in person, please come to the microphone. This is specifically on Article fifteen, thank you. This would be a new capital, uh, new expendable trust fund that we would be starting, uh, and this would obviously go on, uh, for as long as the board deems that it's a valid resource for the school board to have, to be able to stabilize tax increases and budget increases every year. Seeing no comments in person and no comments online, I'll take a motion to move this to the deliberative session. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Tim.
I have a potential question regarding a possible amendment.
Okay.
Um, so, um, earlier in the year when we were originally talking about this, I had presented some language that included, um, four words that are, um, not in this version. Um, so after the word replacing, it would read hardware, software, services, and then, and technology infrastructure. Um, so I, I want to make sure that it, it, as an expendable trust, it provides us the full breadth of what technology includes, which is not just the networks, uh, but what is actual hardware, software, services and technology infrastructure. If, if you're all comfortable that that's covered under infrastructure, that's, that's fine, but, uh, I would, I would propose an amendment that would add, um, those specific terms in there ahead of technology.
Would you like to make that a motion?
I would, I'll make that motion, so.
So it's hardware, software?
It would read, uh, updating, maintaining and replacing hardware, software, services and technology infrastructure.
Perfect. So Danae, you have that amendment there, uh, any questions on that? I know Jase, I have a, uh, Tim made the motion and Jason seconded. Any questions? All in favor of the amendments? We're five to nothing passed, so amended that language, so now Article fifteen, as Tim mentioned, will go on in that third line, purchasing, updating, maintaining and replacing software harvest, hardware, hardware, software, services and technology, infrastructure. And then it will go on for the, uh, for the rest of that, so with.
Yep.
You didn't get my gibberish? Uh, hardware, software, services, and are the four words to get added in there? Yep. And those all go in before, uh, technology infrastructure. Okay. All right, so with that, I will take a, a motion to move this on to the deliberative now, as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Shannon.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jason, all in favor? Five, five to nothing, it passes, so Article fifteen is now on to the deliberative, deliberative session. And our last one, uh, for Jason is Article sixteen, this is the Vehicle Expendable Trust Fund, Jason?
Yeah, sure, so, uh, this would be to, again, not new taxation, right, we're looking at the thirty thousand dollars to be able to put in this fund, uh, based on if the surplus available, right, that's important, surplus available. Uh, this would be our last priority out of the three that I talk about. Um, and so again, it's a student, student-centered thing, this is so that we as a district could maintain vehicles to provide consistent transportation for some of those clubs and for some of those after-school activities that require transportation. Uh, for better or for worse, sometimes the transportation company isn't the most consistent with that. Additionally, long-term, this saves us money if we main, we maintain it, right? As opposed to the whims of whatever contract we have for that particular transportation year. Um, so this is really again about being wise with our money and also making sure that students have the most opportunities that we can possibly provide for them. So that is it for Article sixteen, not really a lot to it. Could be included, could, could, could be, depends on, you know, right? But yes, yeah, so, uh, Board Member B asked me, are, um, like transportation to sports included? Absolutely, absolutely could be included.
Perfect, thank you, Jason, the attend again is to, with, with bus transportation becoming difficult, we've seen some, uh, some scheduling issues at the middle school level in particular, with the bus company not able to provide transportation in one direction and, and parents having to be on the hook for that transportation sometimes on short notice. So this is a way for us to alleviate that, especially some of those smaller team sports. Uh, it's, it's something we could certainly work with South Heagan on in terms of an exchange, or if they needed to, to use a vehicle for a wrestling team or something, they'd be able to quote-unquote rent it from Amherst, however that is, is going to work out contractually, but providing additional transportation options so that, uh, kids and, and students and parents have a more reliable transportation option and a, and a better experience overall with some of those extracurriculars and athletics. So I will open it up for any public comment for our second new expendable trust fund to go on the ballot for the deliberative. In person, I don't see anybody, online, I don't see anybody, so I will take a motion from the board to move this on to the deliberatives.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Shannon.
I'll second.
Same to you, Jason, any further questions or comments from the board?
No, I just have a comment, um, I think that, you know, District Y, this makes all, this particular, um, fund makes a lot of sense, we've seen some success. The high school already has a couple of vehicles that they have for their CTE transportation that also can be used for smaller teams. I know that in a pinch, we've had some success using that at the middle school when it's been available. Um, so that was sort of, I think, the, the, where that idea sort of was born from, um, so I, I like this trust fund.
All right, so with that, I will take a vote, all in favor? All right, one, two, three, four, five, five in favor, none opposed, Article fifteen is now on to the deliberative session. Our last item tonight, oh, sorry, that is sixteen, excuse me. Our last item tonight is going to be Article twelve, this is the Elementary School Bond Project, a much pared-down version from what you saw last night. Again, I mentioned it in the preamble to begin things tonight, highly recommended that for a better, more comprehensive look at this project, don't rely on just what you see tonight. Go back and review the presentation last night with Shannon and Terry, a much more in-depth presentation. Some of the history, some of the needs, uh, and why this project came out and what we've done over the last year, uh, with different options and getting costing for different options, uh, as was recommended. Um, and some of the focus groups, if you will, and surveys that we had conducted over the last year as well. So with that, Shannon, I will let you, uh, go ahead with your truncated presentation for Article twelve.
Great, thank you, and I will do my best to keep it, um, truncated. So our next slide, um, this is just, should the board move this article to the deliberative? This is how it will appear. Some of this, again, if you were at the, um, hearing last night, it will be, it will be, uh, me repeating myself. So key considerations for FY twenty-five, if you could advance to the next slide, please? So the last two years have seen defeated bond requests for a new pre-K to grade five Clark Wilkins School on the existing site. Following post-election resident surveys and feedback sessions, as Chairman Gothier mentioned, the Amherst School Board spent time in retreat during the summer of twenty-three focused on facilities. While the community support for a bond request has received slight gains year-over-year, the overwhelming response from you, our community, has been that while you understand the need, the size of the request have been too great. You asked to see fully-costed renovation and addition options, and the majority of survey respondents indicated you would like to see a smaller project brought forward. Additionally, you shared your concerns with us regarding the future of the Clark School and your wonders about utilization at the South Heagan High School. We appreciate your feedback. The warrant article being presented and proposed seeks to strike a balance between what you have told us and what meets the needs of our students and educators. Following our summer retreat, we explored the possibility with the South Heagan Cooperative School Board of relocating a preschool program to the annex. After a lengthy discussion, it was determined not to move forward with this idea. Additionally, the South Heagan Cooperative School Board undertook an updated and exhaustive space utilization analysis of current square footage use at South Heagan High School. The Amherst School Board is appreciative of the South Heagan Cooperative School Board and all of their work in this area. Their work in discussion at their September eleventh, twenty-three meeting, revealed that adding an additional grade or grades of students beyond nine to twelve would create significant crowding and constraints in the main building. Any discussion to bring additional grades onto the campus would require further discussion and potentially new construction on the existing South Heagan High School's site. The Amherst School Board does not find this to be a realistic or viable option to meet the many needs across each of our districts. The Amherst School Board directed the SAU leadership, along with Building and Grounds Committee and the Building Administration at Clark Wilkins, to work with our architect and construction manager to develop two fully-costed proposals, a renovation and addition and a build-to-suit with cost breakdowns for a grade one to five Wilkins School configuration on the existing site. Bringing grade five to the elementary school remains a critical component of the plan to alleviate a bit of the space constraints that we continue to experience and endure at the Amherst Middle School. This plan also maintains the Clark School for pre-K and kindergarten, where we will continue to maintain and plan for program needs. So two options were fully costed and I presented those last night with Terry. Um, the build-to-suit option was favored unanimously by the Building and Grounds Committee and the Amherst School Board. This option represents the most reasonable design based on the needs of students and our educational program. It's a functional design that meets our present need and is built to carry us into the future for decades to come. And you see that there, it's forty-nine point nine million, so I'm just going to briefly go through, um, the floor plans here. The design being presented maintains and renovates the existing multipurpose room for use as a cafeteria. The design represents an eighteen and a half percent reduction in overall square footage to last year's plan. Again, this was achieved by removing two grades from the plan and working through each space in detail to ensure the final floor plan design was appropriately sized. Additionally, adjustments were made to the design for improved value, for example, masonry exterior walls are now concentrated to high visibility areas and locations. And the interior masonry walls are limited to corridors, toilets and gyms. So this design represents a classic elementary school structure, um, specials, cafeteria, gym, library, first floor, along with first and second grade. The second floor, if we could advance the slide, is, uh, going to house grades three, four and five and their associated educational supports and administrative offices. And moving forward, the site design takes up a smaller footprint than what you saw brought, um, on the ballot last year, so it's eighteen percent smaller. It's also further away from the edge of the wetland buffer, which was something that, um, we, um, were getting some feedback on last year. It offers an efficient drop-off and pickup loop, along with ample parking for school events. The conceptual exterior renderings, if you advance, yep, there we go, um, maintain a familiar look, profile and feel to what we've had in the village for the last fifty-seven years. So what's different, um, this year? Um, you see that there's a reduction in the cost, the grade configuration has changed, we have a decrease in square footage. Uh, we're maintaining the Clark School and it's a smaller footprint on the side. We had some really great feedback from our Building and Grounds Committee and also from, um, folks who showed up last night, um, that, you know, it's really important for us to show a variety of comparisons and considerations on this. So we are working for additional, uh, working towards providing those, should this move forward to the deliberative. So we've grouped the features of this project into four categories, it offers functional spaces that will endure the test of time, enhanced and present-day security features, new mechanical, electrical and plumbing systems, and improved traffic flow. I'm not going to read all of this to you, uh, but you can take a look there. And then going on to the next slide, um, so this slide is a little different than what you saw last night. There was a bond sale today and we are in the process of getting updated information from the bond bank. And we'll have more for you, should this move to the deliberative session, but what we know right now is the most updated bond rate for thirty years, which we are intending to look at a twenty-five year, so this is not an apples-to-apples. Um, is this thirty-year at four point oh nine percent, that was with their sale today. Um, the municipal bond bank is different than a regular bank in that the rate is unknown until the time of the sell on the open market. And the bond bank will provide us an updated conservative rate to use for planning purposes, um, which we'll have for you at the deliberative session, should this move forward. which we'll have for you at the deliberative session should this move forward. Okay, and next slide. Yep, so that actually wraps it up for me. That is my condensed version of the hour-long presentation that you heard last night.
Hey, thank you very much, Shannon. So with that, I will open it up for public comment here in person and then for folks that are online as well. If you're in person, like to come into the mic, please do so. Anybody online, if you'd like to speak, you can raise your hand as well. We do have somebody coming up, so if you're online and raise your hand, we'll have you hold for the moment.
Hi, Christine Grayson, Amherst. I just want to encourage the board to move this to deliberative session because I think that it's a good project, and I think that the voters should be able to speak on it. We've, I'm part of the Buildings and Grounds Committee, and I think we've addressed so many, all of the concerns, really, and tried to put that into this project to make sure that, you know, we still meet the needs of our students, but we've heard the community that the ask was too big in the past. So I'd just like to ask that you move this forward so that the citizens have an opportunity to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Anybody else in person tonight? Okay, seeing none in person. Anybody online? Last call there. Okay, I see nobody online. So with that, I will take a motion to move this to the deliberative session.
I will make that motion.
I have a motion from Shannon.
I'll second.
And I have a second from Jason. Conversation. Any conversation for members of the board?
Yeah, so.
I'm sorry, go ahead, you go. I didn't raise my hand, so.
I didn't either.
Okay, you go first.
Um, yeah, so I just, you know, we talked about this in December, and I grappled with the timing of this. And then I started working on the presentation for the public hearing. And that's when it really sort of solidified in my mind, you know, the 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 path forward. So when I looked at the work that we've done since twenty-twenty, where it went to the public hearing, but then didn't go to the deliberative, and I looked at the interest rates, and I looked at the construction escalation, and I looked at the continued and growing needs in the district. For me, it was, it was obvious that, you know, we, it's, it's worth putting forward again, that we don't have any material gains by waiting. So that's, that's kind of, you know, that work really was eye-opening to me. It was, it was hard to look at, too, right? But so, so those are my thoughts.
Essentially the same. Every year, this gets kicked. Again, the risk is you pay more and get less. And so that's the, the message I want the voters to hear is, is exactly that. Every year we wait to to fix these issues, you potentially are going to pay more anyway and get less for those dollars. So it is vitally important that this be on the ballot and that the community understands that now is the time to move this.
Jason?
Yeah, I also would like to to mention, you know, so we've mentioned it's an eighteen point five percent reduction. I just want to make it clear for people that's not solely just because we removed PK and kindergarten out of it. Our administration took time over the summer after our retreat. So we had a retreat in Wilkins where we were there, and we literally had the floor plan. We had the square footage of each room. We were, we laughed and because we were literally, again, looked at each, the square footage of each room, like, wow, some of these rooms feel big. So it wasn't consistent square footage. Some rooms were over a thousand square feet, some rooms were around nine hundred square feet. And so our administration took the time to walk through the building, compare literally the different sizes of all the rooms that are currently in Wilkins to see how those work for them, and they took square footage out of rooms. So the classrooms are physically smaller. They took, as Shannon showed yesterday, or last night, excuse me, right? They took some of the stores that was in the room, put it in the hallway because it was a better use of of square footage. Like, they really, I don't want people to feel like this is rushed simply because we don't have as much of a, I don't know, marketing or selling or going around and having coffees in the different neighborhoods. It's not that the, it's not that this floor plan was rushed at all, things like that. There was a lot of time, effort, and detail put in by so many people on top of the years of time, effort, and detail that people put into this. But this is, in all honesty, whether it goes forward now or goes forward later, I'm not sure what else we could do to tweak it, to change it, like. We've heard, I know last night, you know, some members of the public suggested that we haven't been listening. We've, in all honesty, we really have been trying to listen and make adjustments and tweaks to tweaks to the plan and things like that, right? This started three years ago before I was on the board with, I think it was an eighty-seven million dollar bond that included all of it. Like, that would have been like, right? That was like, would have done everything whilst it wasn't an appetite, wasn't an appetite for. This isn't, you know, I remember last year, I listened to a community session. One gentleman suggested that maybe we were trying to sell a Cadillac. This isn't, I'm going to be honest with you, this isn't, this isn't Cadillac. This doesn't come with, like, all kinds of bells and whistles. There are new schools being built that have little smart walls, and that's not this. This is a responsible project that our administration feels will allow for our educators to deliver the programming and education that, quite frankly, the students in this community, the students in any community deserve.
Tim? I'm sorry, Terry, do you want to go? Let Terry go first, and then you can jump back in.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I'd say it's a Honda. Good, reliable, stand the test of time, good resale value. That is really where we're at. We are, if you looked at some of, some of the further drawings last night, and I really encourage you as well to go if you'd like to see the full presentation. It's a very timeless design, and it's meant to give flexibility, and it is meant to be, no matter, things do change. They change in education. We have new things. We try. We're always learning and doing better. But it's giving the ability to, and Shannon hates this term, and I'm going to use it, future-proof a little bit, right? That you give yourself. But that was in technology. I I work in technology. That's a term that we use a lot, that you're trying to give yourself the ability not to have to immediately redo things immediately. So you're saying, make it good, basic, reasonable space. We know that small group work is essential. We know that being able to have hands-on projects are essential. We know that we are stretched in those areas right now. So it allows for those types of things that will not go away, but then other things that come down the line, there is some flexibility built into it. But we kept it very, very classic and timeless so that we can, we can ride the waves of whatever comes along in a good and measured way. And I agree that at this point, we have fine-tuned it and fine-tuned it, and there is no more tuning to be done, quite honestly. We are going to be here, and this is the last year that you're going to see this under fifty million dollars because it's now going to be at least a four percent increase year-over-year if we had to bring it back. And so this is our last opportunity to to come under that amount, and that's why I think the time is of the essence.
So somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but but as I understand it, to get to your question about related to the AMS cost, that first proposal now, four years ago, three years ago, four years ago, was the all-in. That was that number, right? That would, that would, whenever that was, that would have done it all. And the community and then the board didn't even go forward with that one.
No, we went.
Oh, no, that's right. Sorry.
Three years ago, Tim, twenty-twenty-one, in January of twenty-twenty-one, we did not put it on the ballot. We presented it public hearing, took it off for deliberative because there was a lot of public feedback that they didn't know what was going on with this. So we stopped it the next year, put on the hundred million, eighty-seven million dollars. It was a hundred million in twenty-one, eighty-seven in twenty-two, and then last year, fifty, whatever it was.
So the, I want to, so I was, I'm new here, but the the board has been trying to get to that number, and that's where that number landed back then. Obviously, that was, it was a much bigger Clark Wilkins included in that at the time. But, but so that's definitely something that the board has been looking at and thinking about for years. That's all. Right, correct.
You're, you're Mike, Terry. Shannon?
Yeah, so just to move the question along, Tom, I think for me, it does come to what Jason said in that we had, this current proposal that's on the table really is, you know, there, there's no room to continue tweaking it. So if we wait, we're not waiting to tweak the the plan or the solution or to find some magical new better solution. We're just waiting to see our cost escalate. And I don't, as a board member, that's very hard for me to say, well, I I'm going to wait and let the cost of this go up because I need to talk to you more about it. I understand the point of having enough time to get out there and communicate, and and I know where we were with the the numbers last year. It is, it is a climb, and I understand that. But I still think, for me as a board member, I feel like my responsibility is to share with the community what our needs are and the best plan to support those needs, and then it's up to the community to make a, you know, to decide if they can, you know, support that. So for me, that's, that's how, also how I arrived at where we need to be today.
So so my question on this is because I I don't feel as adamant as you guys do about moving this on to the deliberative, and I think I made that clear when we voted to move this to public hearing. I would have voted to turn it down and not do it this year at the time, but your, your motion was a wise one, I think, Shannon, to move it to public hearing and and gain some feedback in that month since then and and up till tonight. My concern is, what is our next step? We need about roughly with the same voter turnout as last year, we need an additional five hundred yes votes because it's a supermajority. So we went from thirty-eight roughly to forty-three roughly, almost forty-four percent. So a large increase, you know, in a sizable number of new yes votes that came in. But that is a big increase from forty-three point eight percent all the way up to sixty percent. So my questions are, where do the votes come from, number one? And number two, if it doesn't get, let's say we get to fifty percent, we have a, we double our increase from last year, what's next at that point? You know, because we can't refine this project a whole lot further, do we go for year number four next year? Do we, do we take a year off at that point? And then, you know, at some point, escalations are going to be factored into this no matter what. The prices that we look at for construction materials today probably won't be what they are in six months or in eight months when we are going to, to go out there and and start to go to bid. So we're going to see those escalation costs anyway. Bond rates are trending hopefully in the right direction as it is, so maybe those go down in a year, and escalation goes up for the cost. But the bond over that thirty years for a fifty million dollar project looks a lot different and maybe mirrors what we had in twenty-twenty-two or even twenty-twenty-one. So my thought is, we, the next steps are very bleak because I don't know that you can do this four years in a row. And that's why I I am not comfortable or not as comfortable going to the deliberative, but I do hear all of your points. Anybody else have any other further comments before we call a vote? Oh, sorry.
I do. No, that's okay. I just didn't, I was wanting to be recognized. Um, yeah, so I guess I I hear you, Tom. I would just, I would, I would, I would flip that question on you and say, what are, you know, well, I, and I guess you kind of answer that. So our next steps would, that you're suggesting would be to wait and to just bring the same thing forward next year and and to spend the next year going through that. So another year, then, we're going to have music, you know, on the stage, which I recognize if this fails, that's, you know. Then we'll keep the trailer in the front of Wilkins, I'm guessing.
All these are going to stay for the time being anyways.
Sure, of course.
Current needs, but there's, at that point, there's no plan to get rid of them in four years.
So, I mean, I think any year that you do this, you can play the numbers game of, well, can we get enough votes, right? So we, but at some point, again, for me, it's not about what the community, you know, we've heard the community, and this plan incorporates everything that we've heard, and this is like, do you have a fundamental flaw with the plan? I guess would be my.
No, I I I agree with the plan. I think it's the right plan. I just don't know that the timing. I I am concerned about timing because I I don't, I I don't know, we have nine weeks to get to to promote it and to advertise it. And again, I think most people in town that are going to vote on voting day know of the project anyway, so it's not a new project. It's just a different project from last year, so I I don't think there are going to be many people surprised by it. I just don't know that going to the well for a third time and and possibly doing this creates bad vibes in the community, and then we're looking at a third straight year of a default budget, too. Does this on the ballot hinder any CRFs from passing? Does it hinder our budget from passing? Because I think for next year, I think it's more important to have a budget going forward and then reassessing facilities at that point. Terry?
But to answer your question, I do, I, the the project itself, I support, and I support the option that was recommended by Building and Grounds, building new for an extra three or four million compared to a a full renovation.
Since I know we're trying to be mindful of the time because of the weather, what I would recommend is if we do vote to bring it to deliberative, that we have an upcoming meeting and that we add to our agenda or even have an additional meeting that talks about strategy for how do we get the word out? How are we most effective in talking to people in the last two years? And maybe try to quickly schedule some returns to places where we were able to talk to larger groups. I think that we highlight to the community the differences between the plans to say, here's where we have addressed your concerns, and we've tried our level best. We feel like this is the absolute best plan that we can give you. You have asked us, we have told you the need, you've said, okay, we understand the need. Now give us a plan, and we feel like we are here. We have fine-tuned, fine-tuned, this is it. And so I think I'm willing to stand with my sign at the dump on Saturday and talk to anybody who wants to come. Talk to me, whatever we can do to get ourselves out there. I certainly send people in this room, this is how I first met them, was going to their homes when they welcomed us in, to talk to them directly. I don't think we have the time to do that this time, but we do have some other consolidated ways that we can communicate with our community and that we can try to make sure that they understand the differences and why we feel like it's the right time. And I do think that even though we have those, we've had a lot of positive traction on having those types of funds, those expendable funds. So I don't think that those distract from this. I think that the community is very comfortable with those. We do not, however, have too big agreements also on this year, so it's a, it's a little better ballot, right? So we have one thing we know our community really appreciates from us and is familiar and comfortable with. And so I don't see those competing, whereas last year it was a bit of a competition for having some teacher agreements and this, and, you know, all of those. So it doesn't split that so much where, as a voter, you might go pick my top two that I feel about, and that's what I think ended up happening, right? They said, I support teachers, love teachers, voted for that, and maybe didn't vote for the other two. So I do feel like it's better positioned that way. And so I think then it's on us to do our jobs and do everything we can with the time we have to get the message out there, answer any questions, provide babysitting, work with PTA to help that happen, make sure families know it will be there, and really help our, our staff to make sure they fully understand it and can speak to it, just anything we can do to help move it forward if we think it's the right thing.
Terry, you had read my mind there in terms of our next meeting, which is next Thursday, the eighteenth, using that as a, as a planning session at this point. So any, any other comments by the board? Okay, all in favor of moving this on to deliberative? Four, four, one against, so it will pass four to one. And we will all now go forward, five to nothing to to promote it starting next week. So I would say bring your ideas to the, to the meeting next week. We all have a little bit of homework to do. Obviously, big outreach, short-term timeframe ideas to be able to make sure that we can have as much impact advocating for this project and informing the public, maybe in reverse order there, informing with our advocacy, the necessity and the fiscal responsibility of this project, maybe even comparatively to what we have seen in the last couple of years. So any further comments by the board? Okay, so I will take a motion, we need a motion to close. I don't think we've ever actually, we need a motion to close a public hearing. Yes. I'll take a motion to close. I don't think I did that last.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Shannon. I have a second from Jason. All in favor of closing tonight's public hearing? That's five, four, and none against. So just as a reminder, we will continue on. February fifth is the deliberative session, and you can review all of these meetings on the recordings on the SAU Thirty-nine YouTube channel. And then we will also meet next Thursday for our regularly scheduled school board meeting for Amherst at five-thirty. Thank you for watching online tonight. Thank you for the folks that came here in person, and we hope everybody drives, drives home safely.